...to order, it's 5:31, and I have asked Mr. Brian Frieda to lead us in the prayer of the pledge.
Good morning, Good morning, Heavenly Father, we continue this evening, Father, seeking your guidance, that you would lead us in the path of carrying out your will upon the community of Ballinger, Father, that we make the decisions, or the council makes the decisions, that will be in the best interest of the community and those that come to visit us. Father God, we just ask you please be with our state and national leaders and our military personnel across the globe, wherever they serve, and, Father, that you would just continue to call us, to remember that we are called to be slow to anger and quick to forgive and quick to give praise. Father, within your name and prayer, amen.
Amen.
The pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the text of the flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Brian.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we even go to the next item, I just want to give a shout out to Judge Julia Miller and Chrissy for the wonderful 9/11 memorial that they orchestrated on Saturday at the courthouse lawn. It was a wonderful event and very touching, so thanks to everyone that had anything to do with that. Just so you know, we did have a pretty good turnout. Chief Cornup, you were present there. Thank you for your work too, and I was present as well, so we did have city representation, for those of you who do not know that, so please know, we did have city representation, so thank you. And Steve Gray, you were there?
I was at work, but when they came by, I came out because...
Yes.
And I saw red.
Yeah. It was a great event, and the city did show up and the city did represent, so just want to put that out there and thank you to Chrissy and thank you to Judge Julia Miller for all the hard work.
And Rainya.
And Rainya.
I can't remember her last name.
You're right.
And putting all of that together, so thank you to each and every one that had a hand in that. Thank you very much. Okay, so our next line item is discuss and consider approval of the minutes of the August 23rd, 2021 meeting. Any questions, discussion?
I have a typo here, it's Conley and Company. There's not supposed to be two Ms. Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes with corrections.
Second.
Second by Steve Gray, okay. All in favor? Okay, motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on down to line item number eight, and council will consider approving public management to be the City of Ballinger's grant administrator regarding funds received under the American Recovery Plan.
Mayor, council, we proceeded to put out in the paper for proposals or qualifications for different groups to be our grant administrator. We're not required to have one for this program, however, if we go ahead and go through the process and do it through the hoops that we have to with the federal government, then we're able to use those AARP funds to help pay the grant administrator that will guide us through the various minefields, if you will, of dealing and being able to get our other dollars that are due to the city. So, public management was the only one that the city received a proposal from. That's who we used for the street project that we recently completed, and so it would be statute recommendation that we look forward with public management.
Questions or discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion in a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next line item is council will consider approving KSA as the City of Ballinger's airport consultant for a period not to exceed five years.
Okay. As per text of the rule, we researched and we were able to go out and published for requests for qualifications for this as well, and we received only one response, and that was from KSA. KSA's niche, they're known statewide as the airport engineers. They do these all over, they do the international airports, they do the small ones, they do everything at point. And in fact, they've already gone ahead and started talking to an individual that we had come in and do a psych physical course, did an assessment for us, and started to give us prioritized list of things to move forward with. And so they will be our consultant that will help us not only get those projects done with grant, grant dollars, but they'll also be our consultant that guides us through for some of the other additional big money that is possibly out there for us to go after, like the fencing and the hangers and things like that. And so statute recommendation is that within, if KSA is our consultant for the airport.
As of right now, we don't have one?
No, sir. We've not ever had one, and so I hate to say this, but I'm going to say it again. There's none of us that are really aviation experts or what it takes to operate and maintain an airport, and it's a shame that it's not in any better condition than it is today. So, in order to do so and do after those additional dollars, these folks know airports inside and out. Come to find out, there's even additional grant funding out there that they can help us get to completely redo that house out there and revamp it, like for a pilot's lounge, if they get stuck in a storm or whatever, they can crash there and park them. That was a bad choice of ours. They can land safely and figuratively lay down and crash, lay their head down for the bus, and be able to get up and amend their flight plan and take off and get up. And so that's why we sent out the KSA.
I think we've seen their credentials.
I'm sorry?
In the past, we've seen their credentials.
Yes, ma'am.
Because they...
They put in for other jobs.
For others, and they have a great resume for specific work at the airport.
Yes, ma'am.
We definitely need an engineer firm at the airport.
Yes.
What are their fees involved from?
It's basically a lot, like a lot of the other agents, just by the job, and it just depends on the dollar of the job. And a lot of those grants that we're going after, that we get, the grants will help compensate for the cost of the engineering.
Okay, so is there an expected positive return on investment?
Oh, because when you talk about replacing all the fencing, well, you know, replacing, installing the fencing to keep the hang out of there, and we're moving forward on the new fuel system, which will be credit card and new fuel cell, and then if we go ahead and move forward, the different grants we can get, like that house and the hangers, I guess there's quite an opportunity there for us because there's people, we have waiting lists for hangers.
Right.
And it's...
Lighting?
Lighting is all in the additional business.
And it's crucial for us to do that out there, right?
Yes, sir.
I mean, we don't really have a choice in the matter, someone's going to have to help us with it.
Yes.
And KSA has very good credentials for handling that.
Yes, ma'am. And as far as revenue goes, I know that we lose a lot of products coming through here not stocking it because it's hard to get fuel because you land, and then you have to wait a lot of time for anybody qualified to come out there and unlock it. But if I could go ahead and appreciate, go on this.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Okay, second by Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, number 10, council to approve staff to secure lease of equipment budgeted for in the fiscal year 2022 for the purpose of repairing potholes and other defects as possible. I would recommend, do we just, is this for the new budget? Do we approve the budget?
Yeah, probably best to approve it.
Yeah. Okay, so let's skip 10 and go on. Okay, so we'll go to number 11, which is the city manager's report by Mr. Brian Frieda.
Okay, and company.
And company.
Quick reminder before we go with the police department report, just a quick reminder that coming up September the 18th, there's kids truck. They all set up down here in the back, right there's the wire. It's a fundraiser for carnage library. The railroad is involved, I believe they're going to have some of their equipment up here, and if you've seen the T-post, thank you, going up, we're going to do security fencing up to keep everybody off of the rail and push and force the inside so that the railroad staff can control who gets on and off of...
The rail.
The rail equipment and whatnot, because we don't want anybody, you know, just wandering off somewhere climbing up and something, and then they take off and in cold and they realize they've got a stubble there or something, you know. But they're going to have a shake play here, the city's going to have several pieces of equipment out there for the fellows to look at and touch, I believe fire department is going to be there with at least the tower. But that's the, let's say that's the 18th. Let's see. And I will let Chief Cornup go ahead and give his monthly report back to me, and then we'll get that each...
And we'll have to be quick because we're coming up on our time.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Yes, four.
Do not have to.
I trained on it the other day.
We made, in the month of August, we had four arrests. We took a total of 264 reports, had one accident, and had 243 calls for the month. And the reason the reporter office on some of those, we took multiple offenses or fourth off-attack call. We issued 121 citations, some of those being speeding, restoration. We had seven registered driver calls, 13 thousand. Then we had 52 manual control calls, just been married out of some different calls that we had that just weren't what people need.
Okay.
So that's kind of what we're up for the month of August.
Thank you very much for that.
On our annual control, what kind of calls are those?
Straight offs, dog bites.
I am just curious as to what our, what meaning was?
It's straight offs, dog bites, we do every time we do one of the TNR for trap out, and we make a call on that.
Okay.
Just anything that we do outside the shelter work, if she goes on any kind of call, make sure where you are, I'm going to make the call on that as well.
Okay.
Okay, so it is now 5:25, so we will enter into a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2022 annual budget. Do you want to just give a quick summary, there's been a change to the budget?
Mr. Brian, you didn't change anything to the budget?
No, it's the middle budget, I mean, we haven't changed the amount of money that we put forth in the original, so everything should be very well the same as it was at the last public hearing.
At the last hearing. Okay. So do we, anybody have any questions on that? So we'll go ahead and close the hearing. Okay. And it is 5:46. Line item number five, enter into a public hearing regarding the 2021-2022 tax rate of .532006 for 100 valuation. And you done, Nick?
Huh? I have no one.
No one, okay, great, all right, so we'll close the hearing on that as well, and it is still 5:46. Okay, so number six, the adoption of the budget will be twofold. First, a motion to recognize that this year's budget will raise more revenue compared to the previous year, and then second, to approve that actual budget itself. So I would entertain a motion to approve the raising of more revenue from property taxes in this year's budget compared to previous year by 40,809 or 4.07% as reflected in the budget documents. Mayor, just a minute, is it 809 or 890? I have 90, you have 90.
I think it's 890.
Okay. So it's 890? Yes. Oh, it says it there too. Okay, so, okay, 40,890. Okay, sorry, I had a typo on my paper. Okay, so, motion and a second. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make motion to accept.
Okay, Brian, and do I have a second?
I'm sorry.
Okay, Vanita, will you call the voice vote to acknowledge the raising of more property tax revenue this year from the previous year?
Ken Manley, Habsen, Ryan Langley.
Oh, here.
Four.
Four would be four.
Rick Morris, four. Steven Gray.
Four.
Mary Dottie Seymour.
Four. Okay. Okay, item number seven? Sixty.
Sixty.
Sixty, okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance 0913-2021 adopting the fiscal year 2022 proposed operating budget for the City of Ballinger. I need a motion to approve that ordinance.
Make the motion to approve the ordinance.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Steve, second, Steve, you too, sorry. All in favor? I mean, again, Vanita?
Ken Manley, Habsen, Ryan Langley.
Four.
Rick Morris?
Four.
Steven Gray?
Four.
Mary Dottie Seymour.
Four. Okay. Okay, and now moving on to item number seven. I would like to entertain a motion to approve ordinance 0913-2021A adopting the 2021-2022 tax rate of .532006 for 100 valuation. I need a motion.
I would like to make said motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in, no, Vanita?
One of you.
Vanita?
We'll give Councilwoman Manley just a second.
Oh, okay.
Councilwoman Manley, we are on number seven, adoption of the tax rate of .532006 for 100 valuation. There's been no change from the previous rate, and a motion has been made. My counsel, Mr. Gray, seconded by Senator Rush.
On the item that we're on right now, Brian?
Oh, right.
Yes, sorry. So, so Vanita is going to call?
Ken Manley?
Here.
For or against?
Uh, four.
Ryan Langley?
Four.
Rick Morris?
Four.
Steven Gray?
Four.
Mary Dottie Seymour.
Four. Okay.
Ken, how did that sound?
He said here. Okay, so, next item. So now we're moving on to number 10, council to approve staff to secure lease of equipment budgeted for in the fiscal year 2022 for the purpose of repairing potholes and other defects as possible.
Is it a lease or leased on? I thought we were purchasing.
We were leasing. We talked about the lease, and it was really kind of surprising to me that the residual was going to be as high as it was, this guaranteed money at the end of the lease term, that we can turn around and use it to get into the latest, greatest equipment as the new stuff comes out. Because there's more coming out from England, it just hasn't been allowed into the States yet. It's in roofing. And so the leasing optional is really what we're seeing to be the greatest benefit over the long run.
And this is already in the budget, budgeted?
We approved budget, we approved $55,000 for fiscal year 2022 to cover the leasing expenses, and then we added in specific money earmarked for the materials needed to keep the machine running. So what we presented the last time, we actually were able to whittle some of the price down and bring up some of the attachments that we're getting with it, so to make the machine more versatile, to eliminate 13 attachments for the machine and such and such.
And this machine is for the purpose of doing our pothole repair at a much quicker pace?
Quicker and in a more longstanding manner. So instead of just throwing stuff in a hole and hoping that it works, this is actually cutting out the cancerous, we're repairing the substrate and then putting in brand-new material, packing it in place instead of just throwing it off and running it over the truck.
I'm just going to save us many hours too, Vanita.
It should.
Yes. Do we have any questions, discussion?
Yeah, we have one of them for two weeks of training.
We do, so they'll bring out a specialist, so the machine, the unique feature of this, what sets it aside from all the other manufacturers, is twofold. The one, it has an extra set of movements inside of what they call a wrist, and it allows it to articulate rearward and to fold up more compact, which allows it to drive down the street without tearing down power lines. The other part of it is what's called a steel wrist, and it's just like your hand. If you think this wrist takes that bucket or whatever is attached to it, and instead of just digging like you would at the bottom of the hole in sand, this takes where you can dig down, and you can turn left, right, forward, backwards, and even spin the attachment 360 degrees to use it like we're actually getting a supersized pusher that comes along with it. So it can do all that motion in one machine, and it can self-attach and detach from the trailer that pulls behind it, and it can self-attach and detach from all the accessories, so.
And how many men will be needed to operate this machine?
The idea would be to have a three-man crew. You have one man operating the machine, and then the second would be just tending to the cleanup behind it and rolling the packer over after it's finished by the machine. The machine has a packer built into its grating head, but with the new roller packer that we have, it's going to ensure that everything gets completely packed in. The third person would be ideally putting some type of a sealant over the top of it just to help that edge secure and bond to the new material.
Thank you.
Though, when we do the training, we're looking at the two weeks, it's going to be actual, in-the-field training. And so this person, this senior veteran expert, will be able to take us to bigger places in real-life work or structures and show them how it works.
And the person that's going to be doing the training was actually, he's brought here from Europe. He's got, I think, 12 years of experience on the specific setup, so he's not somebody that's just gone to school. He's gone to school and wrote the books for the next class, so.
What does it cost to offer, like, so, like, if there was a pothole about the size of all those chairs, what would that run in operating cost for that?
To repair that pothole about two foot by two foot, your material cost would be fairly minimal, five, $10 at the most for materials. The equipment and man-hours that you're looking at on that would take, with this machine, a two-foot-by-two-foot hole, theoretically, you could be able to do it in 10 to 12 minutes. As they get really efficient, the first one might take two hours, but as those guys get more confident in the machine and learn how to utilize all those attachments. One example that they showed us was a 25-foot-long, two-foot-wide trench that they went and cut up all old curving, cleaned it out, graded it, and then started laying, and they did that 50-square-foot area in like 26 minutes. So, and then that machine came in behind it to pack all that. So it's highly efficient and very rewarding because people are getting the benefit of it.
It also would stop having to go back and redo that right period of time, so that saves nine hours and inferior money.
Yep, and it can run, it can cut and run at the same time, so it's very efficient, not just on potholes but long stretches of road, it could be used for the maintenance almost in some ways, so.
Well, I have been approached by quite a few people in the community at their aggravation over the streets, and I have told them repeatedly, kindly, because I understand their frustration, that it took us years to get here, and it will take us years to correct it. And we do have a great need for this, for pothole repair. So, anything that cuts down man-hours and cuts down time and can help us to be more efficient and get more repair done is exactly what we need, in my opinion, but.
How much usage do y'all expect to get out of it, as far as like six hours a day, except we?
I'd say minimum of 500 a year. That's what we're budgeting for in the lease program, and we can tie that up if we need to, but you're going to have some idle time when machines are sitting there building hours, but if we can be conscientious about running the machine to the limit of what we can, I don't see why 500 actual operating hours a year is feasible.
Is that the limit on the lease?
That's what the buffer for the lease is set at, so we can adjust some of that, and we've got some variance built into our budgeting to try and look at that real hard and fast to get approved and still stay inside the budget.
Just a term of lease?
Sorry?
Term of lease?
We've got the option for a five-year lease, a four-year lease, or a three-year lease. The budget that we have is set will cover either the four-year lease or the five-year lease.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Special order from the chair.
Second is Ken Manley, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move along to the manager's report. I believe that we were fixing to hear from Becky, our public works director.
All right, so I sent out public works update this afternoon, you may have seen it in your inboxes. We are moving on and starting road repair down to the 300th block now for some of that water line. You know, that road got really bad with some staff outages and staff turnover. We've been real short-staffed, but the guys are working hard and moving along. Brush truck, we had a couple locations that were set up to help us be more efficient with Republic dumpsters, the large roll-off dumpsters, so any able-bodied citizen that has the means to transport their own limbs to these dump sites, we would love that they, you know, do that, and that will help our brush truck be a little bit more efficient. We have three new public works employees that we're training up currently to operate the equipment that we have to understand all of the tasks that are needed, but that does leave a little bit slower efficiency as we get them trained up. That's about all I have, just to, unless I'll have any questions, I don't want to take up much time.
Any questions, discussion?
If you find any in your update that I sent out, just leave me a comment.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate the, it was okay to help us respond to people in your calls and now to this group.
All righty, good deal.
Thank you very much.
One last thing that came up since the posting. City hall will be closed tomorrow morning from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. The front office staff are going to be undergoing some update training as far as it goes with the meters and billing system, and so that they understand when there's questions, they can have better answer for our citizens. And at 10 o'clock, they'll reopen the front door, and then the rest of the staff will be, the public work staff will be in doing some additional training that will not only be here in the council chambers, but they're going to take on field trips and make sure they understand the proper way to read some of our older records, you know, because there's slots in there, and it's caused some issues in the past, and we'll make sure, we've got some new staff, and we're going to make sure that they're all trained up properly when they go out and do those manual reads. when they go out and do those paperwork.
Great, thank you. Okay, so at this time, we'll move on to number 12. City council reserves the right to adjourn to executive session at any time during the meeting to discuss matters listed as authorized by Texas Government Code, section 551.071, consultation with city attorney, section 551.072, deliberations about rural property, section 551.074 on personnel matters. So at this time, we will go ahead and break away into executive, and it's 6:02. Okay, it's 7:11, we are coming back into open session. Out of executive, it's again 7:11, no action taken during executive, so this concludes our agenda items. If I have a motion to adjourn, I would love it.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Ken, do you, Ken got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Speaker is adjourned, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you for everything.